I'd like to call to order the town council regular session to order at 7:40. The date is Monday, January 24th, 2011. We could stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
On contributions to the Act of the United States of America and to reapply the provisions changed by the nation under our legal and judicial authority and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley.
Here.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. Which brings us to the approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have the work sessions for January 4th, January 5th, and January 10th, 2011.
I move approval of the work session minutes for those dates.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. We also have approval of the minutes of the regular session, December 20th and January 10th.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Would anybody care to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to the proposed fiscal year 2011-12 to 2016-17 capital improvement program as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here, too. And we have had multiple meetings on the capital improvement. Town council has met on January 4th. That was our first capital improvement work session. And then we met on January 5th for our second capital improvement work session. And there was a meeting on January 13th, which was a joint capital improvement meeting with the town council and the school committee, which brings us to tonight. So I'll turn it over to Steve. Thank you.
I'll give a brief review on the intent of the capital improvement program. As has been said many times, the capital improvement program is both a budget document, but more importantly, a planning document. It's a planning document that's prepared on an annual basis by the town manager's office and by charter. The capital improvement program must be adopted by the town council honor before February 1st of each year. We develop a capital improvement program really to meet three specific goals. One is to provide a comprehensive need statement for the infrastructure needs of the community, both municipal, school, and each of our utilities. Second, it's to provide a prioritized implementation schedule for meeting those community needs. And third, to provide the financial data and analysis to determine the community's ability to be able to finance the cost of the capital infrastructure improvements, as well as to be able to incorporate the debt service requirements into the town's long-term operating budget proposals. It's a six-year program. The program year that we're looking at is the fiscal year 11-12 through 16-17 year. So we take a look at those six years and move forward. On tonight's Exhibit 1, we see that the presentation says the capital budget. The capital budget is the first year of the six-year capital improvement program on the pay-as-you-go portion of the budget. When I say pay-as-you-go, it means each year will be incorporated into the operating budget for that fiscal year. So for the 11-12 year, for us to be able to meet the costs presented on Exhibit 1 under the section A, B, C, and D would mean that it would be incorporated into the budget and would be subject to further review prior to the council adopting a final budget in April. The general fund proposes a first-year funding of $1,239,000 as detailed as 15 different projects. Most of the items that are listed within the general fund are dollars either to be expended on the purchase of equipment or standalone capital needs being addressed, or for the money to be placed into a capital reserve fund so that once additional monies have been accumulated to meet projected program costs, the project can be incorporated. In some cases, we're looking three years out; in other cases, five years out as far as being able to provide funding through a number of different funding sources. Property tax being the last funding sort of last resort, but we also look to use third-party monies that may come from state, federal grants, or from impact fees, or other third-party revenues that each of the projects may be able to attract. In addition to the general fund, we then show the water fund with two projects totaling $57,000. Any of the funding presented in this documentation for the water fund, wastewater fund, are paid for through the user fees generated from each of those utilities. So there's no property tax impact associated with those programs for either the water fund or on page 2, the wastewater fund. I'd also note with the wastewater fund, the proposed budget for the 11-12 year is $310,000. Since we operate the wastewater treatment facilities as a regional program on behalf of the University of Rhode Island and the town of Narragansett, of that $310,000, approximately $185,000 would be the responsibility of the rate payers in South Kingston. Each of the items that are listed there have shared service functions other than -- actually, all of them have shared services functions with either the university or the university and the town of Narragansett that would be paying toward the total $310,000 cost. Subitem D for the school fund is the pay-as-you-go portion of the school needs for the 11-12 year. The school system has placed into consideration the use of $270,000 of the school fund to meet seven projects that are listed on the sheet. I have mentioned to the council in the various work sessions on the capital budget that the $270,000 presentation is $160,000, I believe, above. It was $160,000, $160,000 over what the base year funding was in the current year. So that may be difficult for them to be able to keep in the budget by the time they submit a budget to the council or the council decides on the transfer of property taxes to the school fund. The second component of the capital improvement program looks at the long-term projects that are necessary to meet infrastructure needs. At the 2011-12 edition of the capital improvement program looks at approximately 17 projects that would be spread across the recreation, leisure service area, general municipal program, or school purpose programs. Of those programs, we would be looking at approximately $11,250,000 in bonding. So of the $20,935,000 shown, of those 17 projects, 11.25 million would be coming from bonding. Of those bonds that would be necessary, 6.5 million have already been authorized by the voters and 4.7 million would need to be considered in November of 2012 at the next election cycle. There's capital improvement funding that will be transferred, as I mentioned earlier. Many of the projects that are listed under the general fund have monies that are transferred into capital reserves. There's about $4.4 million that would be necessary to go toward those projects out of the pay-as-you-go portion of the capital budget. Impact fees would account for about 1.15 million. And there would be secured funds. These are grant dollars that are in hand or monies that are already held in the capital reserves of about 3.5 million for the total over the six years of the $20,935,000. Two other components, or three other components within the capital improvement program is that the town zoning ordinance requires that the town establish impact fees and revisits the value of the impact fees on an annual basis. We are recommending education facilities' impact fees for single and duplex houses for the 11-12 year at $3,244. This is a reduction of $117 from the current year rate of $3361. We're also recommending that the multi-household units with two bedrooms or less, which is held at 50% of the single-family home value, would decline by $59 to $1,622. And the accessory apartments, which is in at 25% of a single-family, would go down $29 or $811 for the cost. We have looked at reductions in the education facilities' fees after reviewing the capital costs associated with the construction of the Broad Rock Middle School and the refinancing that was done of some of the initial bonds that were issued where those have been refinanced at a lower interest rate. This provides for savings both as far as the impact fees as well as the community in general through the debt service payments. For recreational facilities, also required to be reviewed on an annual basis through the zoning ordinance, we're looking at setting up a new structure. We're looking at the single household fee going down to $2,957 or $806 below the current year rate of $3,763. The reason for the reduction is that the formula that's used in establishing recreation facility fees looks at what, at land values. Last year, the land value per acre of developable land was estimated at $140,000. After the revaluation, that number was downgraded by the assessor's office to $110,000. So when you use $110,000, assuming that you need 10 and 1/2 acres for every 1,000 people, if the average house has 2.56 people, you end up with a fee of, it's a mathematical formula that brings us to the 2957. What we're recommending this year is to set up a two-tiered approach since what we have looked at is that by using 2.56, this looked at persons per household, this looked at houses that were being constructed with three bedrooms or more. What we found is that with two-bedroom or less units that are being constructed, that there should be a discounting from the average family size of 2.56 with a 25% reduction. So if we calculate 1.92 people per household, it would mean that for units with two bedrooms or less, the recreation impact fee would be set at $2,218, down from the original $3,763 in the current year. We think this is a necessary change in the recreation fees based on really trying to ensure on a yearly basis that we're capturing what the true cost should be for those fees. The last area that's defined in the zoning ordinance that requires updates on an annual basis is calculating the in-lu fee associated with affordable housing. In South Kingston zoning ordinance, there's a provision for affordable housing through what's called inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning requires affordable housing units to be constructed in a new subdivision of greater than five units. If the units cannot fit within the subdivision that's to be constructed, there's a four-step review that the planning board would make. One is they would try to determine whether the units could be placed within the subdivision itself. Second, they would look at whether the developer could purchase addition, purchase property outside of the subdivision that could then be developed as affordable housing. Third, would also be another form of being able to create affordable housing outside of the subdivision itself. Or the last resort would be that they would be required to pay a fee to the town equal to what the difference was between an affordable housing unit costing and the average cost of housing in South Kingston. Zoning ordinance requires that we look at two things. One is what the Rhode Island Housing establishes as the median family income for Washington County and assuming that 80% of that value is what a family that would be able to afford an affordable housing unit. They then look at taking 30% of that value and coming up with what the value is that's available for a person who's at 80% of median income to be able to spend 30% of their income for housing purposes. You then have to subtract out what the cost of insurance and taxes would be, and it works out to approximately $1,000 that's available. Using a rate of 4.69% as a projected mortgage rate, it would mean that the house could be worth up to $198,000. So if the average house in South Kingston, which is required to be reviewed through the Warren Group, comes in at $300,000, if there's $198,000 as the maximum purchase price for affordable housing units, then it would mean that the in-lu fee for the 2011-12 year would be set at $102,000. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council or the public may have on any of the individual line items within the capital improvement program. I would also note that the capital budget, as presented at $1,239,000 for the general fund, if adopted by the council, does not necessarily provide the last review at this time. The last review on the size of the capital budget for the 11-12 year will, once it becomes a component of the operating budget, the general fund of the town, which the council will have final review on in April. If the $1,239 is approved tonight, it doesn't necessarily mean that the $1,239 will appear in the manager's budget as well because I've got to also look at that again in relation to what impact it's going to have on the overall budget if we were to fund at that level. The funding level for the 10-11, the 11-12 year is $18,000 above what base year funding is. It's attainable, but only attainable if other increases that we see in the operating program do not take a higher priority than the capital facilities planning that's been presented in the document.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have questions here at the table? Okay. Seeing no questions, this is a --
Jim?
I'm sorry, Jim.
Yes, Steve. If winter continues, is the severity level, is that $610,000 even close to realistic?
I'm sorry, the $610?
$610,000 you have for road improvement program, is that close to reasonable if this winter continues in its severity?
I think that it's borderline, it's borderline because let's look at it this way. We're looking at bond requirements of about $2 million being required in addition to the $610, which really is the first year and goes out approximately at the same level for the next five years thereafter. One of the things that we have traditionally done with the road improvement program is that if we underspend the operating budget for the public works departments, we would transfer those dollars so we could use that as a cushion. Obviously, this year does not look as if we'll be returning any surpluses based on where we stand with the winter maintenance program. But I think that the amount of work that's laid out over the next six years for us to be able to get it accomplished with proper controls in place is probably as much as we can accomplish with the staff that we have in place at this point.
All right. Two quick other questions. Accessory apartments, is that detached or attached on one single property?
They can really be, the accessory apartment is --
850 square feet, either detached --
It's based on the 850 square feet.
Okay. Is it 850 or 750?
I think it's 850, or is it 750?
Okay. All right. Lastly, this is your budget, so I mean, your capital program here, so I'm wondering why under the school fund you didn't put $110,000, Y270?
It's based on what's been submitted by the school committee to date. I think that the major reason, as was spelled out at, by the superintendent at the meeting on the 15th of January, was that they had downsized their capital budget during the current year and did away with projects that they would like to have accomplished but that they didn't have the dollars to accomplish. That's why I think that when they evaluate the 11-12 budget that's before them at this point, they're going to have difficulty in being able to provide for that type of a funding level. And they'll have to again look at whether or not all of those seven projects are in fact urgent and within funding level.
The key word is then, "proposed" capital budget. Thank you.
Further questions here at the table? Okay. This is a public hearing, so if anyone from the public would like to entertain any questions, please come forward.
Sometimes I feel like I'm the only guy that wants to talk, but -- Steve Corley, West Kingston, Rhode Island. And, you know, I read the budget. It's definitely a good piece of work. And, you know, we're talking about, you know, leisure's like $7 million in the total for the next six years, $7, $8 million, and the total's $20 million. And, you know, I have no complaints about that. I think that's a good thing to be doing for our community. And I think that if you move the library up into the leisure, you even make that number higher, which I think is a good thing to do. I happen to live at the intersection of Stony Fort and Plains Road. The place I work's on Liberty Lane, and I frequently drive on that section of road, Fairgrounds Road from 138 to Watts Corner Road. Those are definitely roads in need of repair, and it's good to see those on the budget. One thing I saw in the budget was talked about South Road School, and basically, there's nothing in long-term planning with South Road School. And the thing the budget says is that because, well, the funds come from a different area. They come, they come out of the rents received. Well, you know, as a guy trying to read the budget, rent received is income, and what you're going to do with that money is expenses. And I really have no idea to know what you're going to do to maintain that building. That's an expense to me as a taxpayer. And I've said before, you know, right now, I think there's an extra school beside South Road based on what the school superintendent said last year. They could close, she picked two different schools. One, she said she'd save you $300,000 a year. The other, she said she'd save you $800,000 a year. Maybe I got the numbers wrong, but that's what I think I remember from last year. In a capital improvement project, you talk, you have two schools that have a million-dollar expenses out the next six years, one Matunic and the other, West Kingston. And $1 million is 5% of the current six-year plan, and 5% is a significant number. And I've always said that I think West Kingston should be the school that's close because of its location and it's more valuable to the town as a place for business to grow. But having said that aside, I mean, there's a significant amount of money, and I just kind of liked to, you know, I came to the capital, the budget meeting between the school and the town, I kind of had this misconception about you guys would have back and forth and me talking about that stuff. And I guess the reason I'm here today is just to kind of encourage you to have a dialogue with the school, you know, about what you really, what the school really thinks the plan is for the next few years. Because if they are going to close a school, you know, I would think the town would kind of want to say, "Well, let's do this one because overall the effect is such and such," you know, and I just think it's worth the dialogue. And, you know, six years is a long time, and, you know, the town is not growing fast. You know, town manager's report shows that. The number of houses being started is going down. 84% of the people have lived here one year longer, so that means that our population is aging, so it means less kids in school. My fear is, I think that sports, recreation, music, and all that stuff are important to a community. We're spending $8 million for recreational facilities, and if we get to the point where the school goes, but we can't support sports and music anymore, then I just think, that's my fear. It's going to be a sad place to be headed. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Steve. Just a reminder also that the school committee does have their budget work session tomorrow and also January 31st.
Ella, if I could just clarify a couple of points. As far as South Road School is concerned, a capital reserve fund was established several years ago at the time that the school was leased. At that time, all of the revenues generated from the lease payments came into the capital reserve fund so that it could be used for the renovation and upkeep of that building, as well as the monies can be used to pay the debt service still outstanding on the remaining bonds that were used to repair the roof there several years ago. At this point, there's about $308,000 that's in that reserve fund. Of that $308,000, we're looking at over the next several years about $70,000 in debt service payments that will come out of that, out of that fund. So that would put us somewhere in the area of around $225,000 that's available without touching property tax or school funds to be able to renovate or upgrade that building if need be for whatever new purpose it would be. The school committee has also put out a request proposal for a new lease agreement for that building. I think that they were looking at anywhere from a 12-month to an 18-month or 24-month lease. That is still under negotiation with a party that did submit a proposal for leasing a portion of that building. If that lease were to materialize, again, that money would stay within that reserve fund for South Road School. Until South Road School is declared unnecessary for the education system and is turned back to the council for control of the building, we would continue to ensure that the monies that came in through any rental agreement would stay with the building so that the facilities could be upgraded and maintain, or at minimum maintained so that they don't cost taxpayers at the future dollars that would be unnecessary. Nor are we going to allow those dollars to be used for operational purposes in the school system when we're concerned that that building may have a future maintenance cost associated with it.
Thanks for clarifying that, Steve. Further questions from the public? Okay. Seeing none, Jim?
Steve, one more time, you said of the $11,200,000 that we'll need in bonding over the next six years, the $6.5 million that's already been authorized, so therefore --
That's correct.
Only another $4.7 million that have to go to the voters?
That's correct.
Okay. Would that be done in 2012 or 1214?
Recommendation in the budget document would be to have it go at the 2012. And again, the beauty of the capital improvement program with all of the projects here, all the funding schedules are that they're looked at on a yearly basis. What I would suggest is that we look at this again next year in advance of determining what enabling legislation we would need in advance of the November of 12. If in fact, we're not going to need some of that money until '14, then we could delay the bonding authorization if necessary. But again, recognize that bonding authorization and the actual selling of the bonds are two different things. We could authorize those bonds in '12 and still not use the bond proceeds and actually put it to market for several years thereafter. So the council would still have control. The only thing that we would want to do is to ensure that the monies were available if the project was scheduled within an 18 to 24 months for construction purposes.
Do you use in the gross bonded debt, do you use the authorized amounts even though we haven't gone to the market and used the money?
No. When we look at gross, you know, when we look at gross bonded debt, gross bonded debt is only what has been placed into the market.
Okay. Thank you.
But in the debt schedules that I've developed for you, we are showing you two different -- different schedules, one schedule shows you debt that's been incurred to date, and the second schedule shows you that debt incurred to date, plus if we integrated the, the eleven point two five million dollars over that six-year term.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, further questions, before we close the public hearing? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. And do we have a motion to approve the eleven twelve sixteen seventeen capital improvement program?
Aye, so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries seven, five zero zero, excuse me. And thank you, Steve, and the staff, for putting this together, it's a fair budget to meet the needs of taxpayers here, and to meet the needs of our community, so thank you.
Couldn't do it without the staff.
Which brings us to communications. We have a resolution adopted December thirteenth, two thousand and ten, by the Jamestown Town Council, requesting the General Assembly to enact comprehensive extended producer responsibility legislation, is received, placed on file in the Town Council for the directs. Polly?
Well, I think we discussed this during the work session, and we decided we would place this on file. More money for the towns, and we didn't, I think it was something that looked like-
Thank you, Polly. We have, we have a motion in a second, further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Communications, item B, a communication dated January tenth, two thousand and eleven, to Governor Lincoln D. Chafee, from David J. Crook, Senior President, Pro Tem, near Gansett Town Council, suggesting the formation of an advisory panel of city and town representatives to comment informally on the statewide issues from a municipal perspective, is received, placed on file in the Town Council for the directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and this is a letter from President Pro Tem, David Crook, but it doesn't look like it's been adopted by his Town Council, and it's not in the form of a resolution, it seems like it's for information only, I, I think we discussed placing it on file, so.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion, ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Brings us to Communication F, this is a communication dated January eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, from Council Vice President Carol Hagan McEntee, proposing adoption of a resolution concerning the impact of coastal erosion in Mattoonik, is received, placed on file in the Town Council for the directs, and I'll ask you, Carol, to address this.
I proposed this resolution because of the, the enormous amount of erosion that's been going on in Mattoonik Beach, and the effect it's had on residents and businesses located on the beach, especially the Ocean Mist and Tara's Joyce's Family Pub, along with several other residences. It recently has come to my attention that CRMC, well, I shouldn't say recently, it's been an ongoing problem, that Coastal Resource Management Council has been issuing violations against these property owners for attempting to protect their property from the severe erosion that is practically overtaking their land and buildings. So in response to that, I discussed it with the staff at the Town Hall, and it, it, with further investigation, it turns up that there were approximately eleven cease and desist violations issued by CRMC in the year two thousand and ten, and most recently, one was issued to the Ocean Mist. Now, along with these violations comes administrative fines and per diem fines that costs the property owner quite a bit of money if they continue, if the violation continues, and in many respects, these are just attempts by each property owner to protect their property from sinking into the ocean. So what I'm asking the council to go along with me on this is that we ask Coastal Resource Management to take a flexible approach in the application of its rules and regulations, especially as it affects the Mattoonik area, and to understand the critical nature of what's happening down there, and also to understand the, the situation the town is in, that the Mattoonik Beach Road is in a, also threatened by erosion, which is something that we all have to worry about for public safety purposes. But, in asking that CRMC take a flexible approach, and review their program policies, and become more of an advocator, as opposed to a regulator, for, for the situation that exists with the erosion in Mattoonik, and that, to understand that these oceanfront properties and their owners are in a constant combat to fight off the severe coastal erosion effects that has negatively impaired their properties. And in so doing, I would ask that, that we meet, the town, that the Coastal Resource Management Council meet with the Town Council, and Town officials, and residents, and business owners from Mattoonik, to try and address this problem, and develop long-term and short-term resolutions on how they can handle the impact that the erosion is having on their property, especially, and it needs to be reasonable and economical, so that the property owners can afford to address their individual problems. And I would like to send this along to the governor, the local legislative delegation, the congressional delegation, and CRMC. So I would ask for the support from my fellow council members.
Thank you, Carol. Questions here at the table? Jim?
If there's any questions, um, excellent resolution, one that, we have a meeting with Coastal as soon as possible, preferably here in South Kingstown, maybe down on the beachfront in Mattoonik, so they'll understand. What we need from Coastal Resources right now are recommended options on an emergency response situation post-storm versus long-term planning, and, right now, it's really up to the homeowners, business owners, how to respond to, to storm damage, or what's predicted here in the very near term. And this is a very difficult role to be in, because, as Carol mentioned, rather than being advocates, they're being regulatory, much easier to find, and say no, and to stop, rather than give us ideas and some alternatives. Here's what we've seen work in some other areas, here's what you need to do as a team, not individually, we need that kind of response from Coastal Resources, which, to date, has been sorely lacking. And the other thing I think Coastal needs to pull together here, we've got areas like this in Mattoonik, and you've got it along the shoreline, we've had, we've got developed areas which have been developed, developed for centuries, business, old hotels, residential, and yet we have huge beach areas, so I think we need a different kind of designation from Coastal, yet I think they really, I think everything falls under the same designation, whether it's a wide-open beach and open space versus a developed area. And so that's, this is something we really need to all get on board, hopefully, unfortunately, I should say, earmarks are gone in Washington, so a lot of that extra money that may have helped situations like this, as well as Cliff Walk in Newport, so on and so forth, earmarks are gone out of the federal budget right now for the year coming up. So, we've got to think of what we can do at a local level, not only for the business owners, residences, but the town too, we've got to be able to respond to these issues. And it's just not where we talked about this evening, Joyce's Family Pub, Tara's, and Ocean Mist, you know, everybody read the paper yesterday, they'll see coastal sites retreat from the rising seas, from worsening erosion, talked about in California, North Carolina, water rising three times faster than a hundred years ago, and the one in North Carolina talks about a, one meter, I guess, what, three feet, three inches, that the water could rise over the next year, so our problem is not only in Mattoonik, but if you saw the storm from last March, Succotash Road, and we take care of the public safety of those people down in Jerusalem, and that's another area, south of the bridge, that could be underwater, you know, during the century. So we really need an effort here from Coastal to recognize that there are emergency situations, give us alternatives, don't find us, don't make us go through an engineering process that would take years, and by that time, probably the property would be lost, we'd need a twofold approach, short-term like that and long-term, so resolution deserves strongest support, and an immediate response from Coastal down here at our shores, at the earliest convenient, that can be probably negotiated, is the right word to use.
Thank you, Jim. Polly?
I do think it's important to meet with Coastal, I think we have to remember that they have the whole shoreline, we remember the houses, well, five years, ten years ago, that, right down there, that moved the houses back, some of them moved them back, some of them put sandbags up, nothing seems to work, I think realistically, it's a, it's a difficult battle, but I do think Coastal needs to be more proactive, and we need to push them into it. But I think it's important to go along with what Coastal says, because I think what one person does affects the people on both sides, the businesses on both sides, so I think we have to listen to what they say, but I think we have to encourage them to say something.
Yes.
So it's a good resolution.
Thanks. Thank you, further comments here at the table?
Well, I, I'd just like to say one more thing, I mean, in the spirit of inviting them down, maybe we could have them down to Tara's or the Ocean Mist, and, on a stormy night, some nights when you go in there, it's, it's like they're on a sinking ship with a pail, trying to bail the water out, so it really is important to get on this as soon as possible.
I'd like to say during the day, because really, one of the main things we've got to protect is really the road that leads to the businesses, and all the other houses that are down there, that's where really a big chunk of our tax base comes from, and so I think it's actually more important to a daytime visit.
Daytime's fine, I, I shouldn't have said night, I guess.
We all know that bend at the Vanilla Bean, that certainly needs to be protected, that's where the problem all arises, once that goes, then we're really got a big problem, never mind just things slipping into the sea. And I think that's why, even in the work session, when I mentioned about the congressional delegation being added on to your resolution, because they were very concerned when it came to the flooding this past March, how, how things were fearing at the beaches, it wasn't the beaches that were the problem then, but this is certainly something that they need to take a, a look at, they were concerned then, we're concerned, and so by adding them on, I think it's a big step for, and it puts, I think, some kind of more pressure on Coastal, when you have the congressional delegation involved with it, and I know I've, I've spoken with Senator Snawski about this issue too, it's certainly something that's a, a big concern for her, and I think that she'll definitely work with us and be an advocate, you know, to coastal resource for the town, so.
Thank you, Kathy. Steve, is there anything further you'd like to add?
No, I think the, the resolution as drafted at this point really states a, a strong municipal position. The only thing I would note is that there's really two divisions within Coastal, the Coastal staff really prepares the reports on behalf of the Coastal Council, Coastal Council, their actions really are to deal with policy. I think that, that we need to get the Coastal Council to understand that our concern is that if they're not developing the policies to be able to work with the problem that's down there, then they're acting just as a regulator, and I think that the resolution clearly outlines that.
Thank you. And I would just like to add my two cents worth, I'd like to, you know, thank Carol and the, Steve and the staff for putting this resolution together, it is outstanding, and it's really looking for us to work collaboratively, to brainstorm solutions with Coastal Research, Resource Management Council, and put a plan of action in place, so thank you. Okay, so, we need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for Communications F, and all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. I would just like to make one announcement, that I was invited to the Martin Luther King Celebration on Monday, January seventeenth, at the church on Allen's Avenue, so I went as representative of the Town Council, and it was a delightful Martin Luther King ceremony. Any other comments here at the table, or from the public? Carol?
I spoke with the Chamber of Commerce today, and I just wanted to make one announcement regarding them, that there will be a Rhode Island statewide chamber night at the Ryan Center at URI on February second, two thousand and eleven, members and non-members are all invited, and it starts at five o'clock, five to seven is the networking event, and then at seven is the URI versus Fordham University basketball game, and it's twenty-five dollars per person, it might be a good place for people to meet other business people and make connections, network, and see a good game.
Thank you. Okay, which brings us to Town Manager's Report.
As I mentioned to the council in the pre-session, I directed the closing of the Dougway Bridge, Dougway Road Bridge today, that was based on a state engineering report that was received this morning, a memorandum indicating that the, the state had done a reinspection earlier this month, and while they were doing the inspection, they also had both an oil truck and a school bus passing over that bridge. Both of those are not allowed on that bridge at eight tons. The conditions of the, of the main members on the bridge were reevaluated this year, they find that at this point, the bridge does not have carrying capacity whatsoever, and their recommendation was to close the bridge. I directed the action to be taken, the signage has been placed out to one thirty-eight, as well as coming in from Richmond, and the Highway Department today brought the barriers in to close off the, the bridge in its entirety. We will be reviewing and preparing a memorandum for the council on various options, I think that the options are gonna be very limited within a cost budget that would be reasonable for a bridge that currently services approximately three hundred vehicles a day. But that information will hopefully be prepared for the council within the next few weeks, however, I do not see that bridge being reopened anytime in the immediate future.
Thank you, Steve.
If there's, that's the only item I need to report on this evening, I'd answer any questions the council has on either of the two reports that have been prepared since the last meeting.
I see no questions here. Which brings us to Town Solicitors' Report.
What's the question?
Any questions? Okay, and we have no appointments tonight, which brings us to New Business, Item A. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Arnold Lumber Company, two fifty-one, Fairgrounds Road, West Kingston, for Village Green Improvement Project Materials, in accordance with all bid specifications, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand four hundred eighty dollars, and as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager, dated January eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Bid Recommendation, Village Green Improvement Project Materials. Steve?
Recommendation is for award to the lowest qualified bidder, which is Arnold Lumber Company, this is for the materials purchase alone, for the improvements that'll be made at the, the Village Green. Council discussed this last December, when they issued a contract for, a partial contract for the reconstruction of the bridge, and some other improvements at the Village Green, we said at that time, what we would do is to purchase the materials, and have some work done in-house, and have a, another contract that will look at installation of the materials once on-site.
Thank you. Any questions here?
I move approval of this, this item A.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New Business, item B. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to Liberty Chevrolet, Ninety Bay Street Road, Wakefield, Mass., for a two thousand and eleven GMC four-wheel-drive pickup truck and snowplow in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars, including trade-in, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Service Director to the Town Manager, dated January eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Bid Recommendation, Pickup Truck with Snowplow. Recommendation is for award to the lowest bidder, Liberty Chevrolet out of Wakefield, Mass. Two bids were received. The Public Works Department operates with a fleet of seven four-wheel-drive vehicles for day-to-day use and snow-removal operations. This is one of that fleet that needs to be replaced at this time. Budgeting for this was done, I believe, in the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten year. The money's been held in reserve since that time. Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of New Business, item B.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to New Business, item E. A resolution authorizing the Town Manager, in cooperation with the School Department Administration, to negotiate a contract with Schneider Electric Buildings Americas, Incorporated at Brickstone Square, Andover, Mass., to perform an investment-grade audit of town and school facilities with regard to energy conservation and savings, as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager, and School Superintendent, dated January nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, and entitled ESCO Energy Service Company, RFP Review and Recommendation. As noted in Vin Murray's memorandum, we're recommending the award of contract with, for an energy service company, and that would be Snyder Electric out of Andover, Mass. Snyder is the parent company for American Power Conversion in West Kingston. We solicited proposals from ten different energy service companies for this contract. Three were interviewed. The interview panel consisted of representatives from the School Department, the Town Finance Department, and the Planning Department. As noted in the memorandum, what we're looking at is to hire a company that will do a preliminary report. That preliminary report is an investment-grade audit of all municipal and school buildings. Once that is, let me talk for a second as far as what that entails. It would be a detailed review of existing facilities on all energy-related systems within the, and building features. There would be a detailed review of the cost history for operating those facilities and the types of energy uses by different categories, whether it's HVAC, electric, or fuel uses. There would be a compilation of a menu of improvements that could be made to each of the buildings, and a financial analysis that would look at what the savings would be if energy-saving activities were instituted, and what the cost of the activity would be to what the buyback would be for that purpose. There would then be a final report that would be issued with prioritization. That's what the initial study would do. If we take that study and do nothing with it with Snyder Electric, we would be required to pay thirty thousand dollars, roughly thirty thousand dollars for that proposal. We would then own the documentation within that report and would be able to manage it as we saw fit. What could occur is that we would recommend entering into a performance contract with Snyder Electric to put their money where their mouth was, and that would be to be able to actually make some of the improvements that would be recommended that had the best buyback on it, and then they would be held accountable for the savings that they would have stated in the report could in fact, could be realized. We also would be able to use municipal dollars to be able to offset costs and to be able to use dollars that are available in grants that have been obtained. At this point, the town has approximately three hundred thousand dollars in energy-related grants that could be used to advance any of the energy efficiency proposals that may come forward. I think this is an important first step in being able to evaluate all our facilities for energy needs, and I think that having the IGA completed by Snyder, who made the best presentation of the three firms that were interviewed, I think will get us on the right path. So I'd recommend the council award as presented in Vin Murray's memo of January nineteenth to Snyder Electric, and provide my office, in collaboration with the solicitor, to be able to negotiate a proper contract for the initial thirty thousand dollar study. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of New Business, E.
Second.
Further discussion? Ready to vote? Just let me qualify, I've said thirty thousand a couple of times, it's really a thirty-seven thousand dollars if it was a standalone, if it was a standalone project. Thank you, Steve. Okay, are we ready to vote? Carol?
I'd just like to note that the aspect of overperforming as they seek to establish a beachhead in Rhode Island, so they want to put a, have an office here and a presence in Rhode Island, and also that, I don't know if you mentioned it, Steve, about them being the parent firm of APC in West Kingston, which I think it could, you know, bring more business into the town, and that's always a good thing, so definitely am for it.
Good points.
Okay, further comments? Okay, we're ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Okay, which brings us to, we have a closed executive session here on the agenda tonight, so if we could have a motion for executive session, this is a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, forty-two dash forty-six dash five, A six, to discuss matters related to or concerning a prospective business or industry locating in the state of Rhode Island when an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the interest of the public. So could we have a roll call, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Mcatee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Counselman O'Neal?
Yes.
Unanimous affirmative vote to adjourn to close executive session at eight thirty-five.
Thank you.